We have a form.
We have a form.
Um, good question. Yeah.
What's up, Patrick?
Sorry. Delicate. We have a form. You can go around.
Uh, Alderman Boyd is just right behind me. Patrick, can I see your profile? Here we go. Thank you. Oh, how's it all? We're all the same thing.
It's a channel. Just this way.
Good one.
He's covering it all.
Think of something?
I just ran from the set.
No.
Doctor's. Yeah. And Katie, I want you to know who I am. Know who he was. We all stand in the game.
We had that as an art at all.
What do you say to this?
I'll say a diversity of training.
This is a good story. Well, this is a great idea. Does it panic the board? Sorry. It's what, um, they, um, we're on school. Do you even know who you is for other people?
All right, very good. Uh, let us call the, uh, oh, hi, Jack. Meeting's the order. And David, if you could call Roman. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Alderman Cohn. Not currently present. Uh, Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Mr. Stroud.
Present.
Chair Stroud. Uh, Commissioner Valens.
Present.
Have a forum? All right, we have a forum. This evening, we have, uh, four items, uh, in our packets. Uh, the first one's gonna be done by Don, not by Roman. The second one by Don, the next two will be done by Roman. Then we have a new business item at that point. And Don, I mean, uh, Roman, on you.
We have two new business items.
Two?
Um, and one is, we have two informational items, um, that are not to be acted upon, but we're gonna insert them before we do the chapter. We're gonna insert one before we do the chapter.
All right. And before we do that, we need to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve it? If that moved and moved to second it, can we have a roll call? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Reese?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Valens?
Aye.
And Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And most impressive, with all present voting yes. Minutes have been approved at that point. Uh, Commissioner Cohn is coming in the room at this point. So, Roman, you can proceed it.
Very good. Very good, Mr. Cohn, and we're looking at the mission. Um, we have two related items. The, uh, handle the first one, Donald, and the second one. And it's very short presentations. This first resolution is, uh, basically requesting the approval of the Planning Commission, uh, to conduct a, uh, a presentation and a public hearing at a future Planning Commission meeting. Um, and that would be regarding the Jeff, Graboy-Jefferson Historic Neighborhoods Plan. This, uh, neighborhood plan was initiated about eighteen months or so ago, in September of two thousand and sixteen. And the goal, uh, with the production of that particular plan is to guide community development efforts in the study area. The, uh, the study area is, uh, generally bounded by Graboy Avenue on the north, uh, Jefferson and Broadway on the east, Mariner Street on the south, and, uh, Grand Boulevard on west. It includes, uh, portions of, of four neighborhoods, all of Benton Park West and Graboy Park, and a good chunk of Dutch Town and a very, very small sliver of, of Mount Pleasant Neighborhood. The, uh, the plan will be completed shortly, and, uh, it's going to be submitted to PDA for review by the Planning Commission, at a future meeting. A plan is being prepared by RISE Community Development. Uh, this is a, uh, not-for-profit organization. You may know them better by their previous name, RHCA, the Regional Housing and Community Development Alliance. And, um, they're working in partnership with a community development corporation, the Dutch Town South Community Corporation, and other stakeholders in the area. And representing RISE here tonight is, is Rick Bonish. Uh, if there's any questions, you can answer those with regards to the, uh, plan. The, uh, the image on the, uh, top of the slide there, I believe, is a, the draft of, of recovery. A fairly lengthy document. We'll make sure you get, uh, copies well in advance for use and review. And so, basically, this resolution is not taking any action on the adoption of the neighborhood plan. It's basically just, um, approving, uh, the, having a presentation and a public hearing at a future meeting. That meeting will likely occur in a couple of months, uh, at the May Second Planning Commission meeting. And it authorizes staff to advertise, uh, public notices for that public hearing, let people know, uh, that, uh, the public hearing is taking place. And, uh, it's also possible, as part of that particular meeting, that there would be a, a vote by the Planning Commission, uh, to either adopt, modify, or reject that neighborhood plan. That would occur at that same particular meeting. So, we've got the presentation, uh, that would include presentations by, uh, myself and, uh, a representative from either RISE or one of the new stakeholders, um, the public hearing at which anybody could speak, and then possibly the, uh, the vote as well as to, again, whether to adopt it, modify it through the public hearing. Again, likely in, in, in a couple of months. So, I'd be happy to take any questions, and, uh, if you'd like further information about the plan, uh, Rick is, is the person to ask there.
Uh, before we take any questions, Rick, is there anything you want to say before we move over?
Uh, well, I, I just wanna thank, uh, the staff here at PDA for, for all their work on this, together with us, uh, through this process, and the community development administration, also supporting data and mapping work that we've done. Um, it's been a, a very, uh, long and, uh, and thorough process. We, like, Roman said, we've been working on it five, ten months. We've been at a real deep level, PDA, students, or people, uh, who just, uh, look into the work, or, or take the time back through this process. There's a series of meetings that's been created, representing the whole planning area. All three aldermen there have, have been involved from the beginning. Um, we're excited about it. We look forward to presenting this to the commission. I actually do have one question for Roman. Are, are you saying that it could be presented and adopted at the same meeting? Is that, that the?
That's a strong possibility.
Okay.
Initially, we were thinking of, of just having the presentation and, and the public hearing at one meeting, and following that up with the vote at the next meeting. And then, in talking with, uh, Carrick, he was saying that there was, uh, um, a lot of, uh, pressure to try to get the, the plan finalized and out in front of the neighborhood out there.
If, if it's possible, that'd be great. I mean, it's, it's, it's.
I'll make the decision at the time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, how could you guys not have a chance at the time? Um, but yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to take any questions, just, just to really, uh, leave pro. I, I guess I would add one thing about this. This plan, when you see it, is not, uh, the more sort of conventional style of neighborhood plan. It's not a lot about land use and architecture and, and development. It's got that in there, but it's got a whole lot about humans and communication, policy, economic development, and an old range of, uh, whole, uh, I'd directly block this broad, uh, um, vision for the, the area.
So, two things, Al. Given that we love these robust neighborhood plans, it would assist in some participation. We'll be inclined, unless something crazy happens, to approve at the same night that we have the public hearing. Uh, the second matter is, it's like the Skinkett of Oliver plan, in that it does cover other things, but, uh, as you'll see when we get, get through it, uh, not tonight, is that there's a checklist of things that are required to be in it, to be in our purview, uh, and then other things are frosting into the neighborhood. And it's exciting, just, you know, I have no staff and no money to do these myself, so it's nice when that's pretty, done pretty robustly.
All right. With that, I'll first open the question up to, uh, Commissioner Reese, that she's on the phone, I can't see her hand. If she has any questions before I go around the table. Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
All right. Any questions? President? Saying not at that point?
I, I don't have any question. Uh, they, I, I'm one of the three aldermen that represents this area, um, and it has been a very long and arduous task, uh, engaging members of the neighborhood for the, you know, past few years. Um, it's something that my, uh, neighbors are exceptionally excited about, seeing something, um, at this level happen, uh, in our community, and, uh, you know, looking forward to having the plan adopted by the commission.
Very good. And just have another, two aldermen are out of the room, and, um, we were being criticized for our health and the neighborhood. That's why they went out of room, modestly.
All right. With that, any, any motion? Motion where I can, for?
It is, uh, approve, uh, having a presentation.
Resolution. So, move. Has been moved and seconded. We're agreed. Who did you call, Roman? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
And Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes. Very good, thank you. With, with that, and, and we appreciate you coming by, Rick, for that.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully you didn't have to park too far away.
I won't.
Oh, my gosh.
That's very good. Uh, with that, we move to seventy-eight oh.
The Ted Bruce, by the way.
Next Sunday comes, you're gonna bring that. Uh, seventy-eight oh one. Uh, Don, you're gonna be going through this one.
I'll be doing this, similar vein to what Roman just told you, but much simpler in scope. Uh, there's an existing neighborhood plan for Lafayette Square, um, and, um, actually, the Lafayette Square Bourbon Plan, as I call it. Uh, we've seen it, we've adopted it, uh, a long time ago. Uh, in March of two thousand and fourteen, there was Amendment One, uh, approved and adopted for the portion of this, the northwest corner. I'll just give you a reminder of Lafayette Square, the northwest corner, it would snuggle up and be bonded by, uh, Jefferson Avenue, uh, and shutout. And in that area, it is, uh, area of hodgepodge of industrial uses, of former industrial uses. Uh, previous amendment, uh, was to be in response to, uh, changes, uh, many of them were prompted by Prax Air many years ago, blowing up and making the national news. Uh, it was an industrial site. It was zoned for heavy industry, uh, and that would've been a use by light until we adopted the plan to change that. We did, we did. Subsequently, the zoning was changed. So, amendment number one really consisted just of essentially five pages of, uh, coverage and some changes to maps and text. Amendment number two is essentially for the same geography as amendment number one, but it's time to make some tweaks, uh, and changes to it, uh, via the work that's been going on by a developer in the neighborhood that has assembled the land that's involved in this northwest quadrant, and working with the neighborhood extensively. So, uh, with that, we will have a presentation and public hearing at the next meeting, uh, after the changes. And, uh, today, we're asking you, as Roman just did, just that we could do the, uh, public hearing and make the public notices for that. So, that's what we're asking you to, to do today, is again, it's just a public notice and hearing. However, that's what I'm gonna ask you to do. And then, uh, this is one of the more exciting developments one has seen in some time. So, I've asked the, uh, developer if he would give us an informational presentation, uh, on what they're proposing, uh, just, uh, as a inspiration to when you're gonna see things and Planning Commission speak about adopting, uh, a change to the plan. It's your pleasure as to whether you wanna vote first, or whether you'd like to see that informational presentation, but I'm asking you to, uh, of course, approve us to have this public hearing. Any choices?
I'm sorry about that.
Any choices, just whether you wanna go ahead or?
Or any choice? Let's, let's do the presentation, just end the vote on it, that's definitely. You say it's an informational presentation, so.
So, Don, are you behind me? Are you turning the lights, uh? Where's them?
She has a power on it?
Nobody. Where's the power?
It's actually the P. While, while we're finding this, uh, after Prax Air, I'll give you the background. After Prax.
Can you introduce yourself first?
I'm, uh, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's Bill O'Gale, who, uh, is the developer for this project?
One of them. And my, uh, one of our, our guys, Craig Keller, has been helping us with this. When, when, uh, if you're familiar with, uh, the Prax Air site, you know the history of that. Everybody knows the history. There's, uh, there was the development prior, uh, to our getting involved a year ago. Pulley Development had a townhouse development that the neighborhood was absolutely adamant, uh, uh, opposed to. When it became available, when Prax Air pulled out, um, three of us, uh, bought the property. Uh, the property is shown on this site. Oh, here we got the site. Okay. Go to the next one. This is where, you can see where Lafayette Square is next. Thanks, lady.
If you'd like a pointer, I can give you a pointer.
Yeah, that's really good, actually. Does it work on screen?
Oh, it actually works. Amazing. Make this quick, because I know, but everybody wants to do a passport or something. This is the, the, uh, everything in the, whatever color that is, day. Uh, that's the area we, we're, uh, talking about. The most recent building, with the exception of the truck dock, uh, truck facility there, uh, has been vacant for, I think, fifteen years. Much of it's been vacant for fifty years. It has a, a lot of issues with, there's a major, the Mill Creek Sewer goes through the, the center of it, so a bunch of issues with there. We own all of that, um, and have been working with the neighborhood, really, since last spring. Uh, this, this fall, there was, uh, we had, uh, six major neighborhood-wide meetings, and probably another, um, ten or twelve smaller meetings with the Neighborhood Association, going back from, kind of, visioning of what, what oughta happen there to, uh, to the final plan, you'll see.
So, how, how long have you been associated with the neighborhood?
I moved in, I thought I was one of the latecomers. I moved in in seventy-seven. I'm with Acre Big Architects, and so we're doing the plan. Uh, this is the, we hope, the schedule. So, the plan that you're talking about here, um, is in the green. The, the Chapter ninety-nine approval process, we hope, is here. The neighborhood for the first phases, if all this works, uh, break ground fairly quickly. There's a design review, obviously, to the buildings and building permit process, and then we hope to start construction on the first phases, uh, in, uh, sometime in June. This is the, the, the plan. Everything that you see, um, except the truck building, uh, right here, which will go down, uh, has been vacant, as I said, for a very long time. So, it's a, a mixed-use development, and I'll show you the next slide, kind of, what it looks like, but starting with, uh, townhouses, apartments, uh, apartments and probably some condominiums. There's an aspirational, uh, effort for a small hotel in addition to apartments. Vindesec, do you know Vindesec? Everybody knows Vincent. Vindesec is right here. And Paul Hamilton owns that, is, is one of my partners in all of this, is a small, uh, not, not so small, training, uh, operation that goes along with the restaurants. We hope to expand that, in this, uh, in this corner. This is the, the truck dealership, which has already moved out, unfortunately moved to Illinois, uh, but a small portion that's still there has to remain in San Jose. And we'll, they relocated, actually don't know exactly where it is. So, if all this goes ahead, uh, that building will come down, uh, later this summer as well. This is the former edge, um, restaurant here, which kind of took a direct hit on Prax Air. I'm really too bad, 'cause they have great bricks. Anyway, uh, we don't, uh, own that, uh, but we've been working with the developers who do own that, uh, they've, they're on the verge of a pretty good plan, a very good plan, actually. This is the, uh, kind of little tiny building. It's a, it's a kind of a ruin, almost a romantic ruin right now. Uh, it was, uh, one of the original buildings from eighteen thirty, um, eighteen thirty, think of that. It was, uh, a candlemaker's, uh, because this was a, a major slaughterhouse, uh, right there, it was using a byproduct of the color glass. So, the, the center of the, the project, uh, is a, a new mini park or park. We've got that sewer that goes right through us, and we can't really build on that, uh, so we've taken advantage of it to make a, kind of a heart to the neighborhood. A couple of things that you, you may not pick up on this drawing, we've set the buildings fairly far back from the curb line on, on Chodo, um, to help Chodo, but also, um, get out of the way of MetroLink if it ever goes, goes in here. And some other. Seems like it may, another step forward, hopefully. Thanks.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, just some of the details, the, the street space, we spent a lot of time on, what the traffic flow is, that these streets are very narrow. The neighborhood, uh, really doesn't wanna impact, um, this neighborhood with, with traffic, so we've, we've worked with them to do exactly that. We're proposing the MetroLink stop here. And then, there's a, some traffic changes that are gonna happen here. Uh, there's an open state network, both on ground and on, on top of the buildings. Next, here's that major one. Most of the parking, uh, it's gonna be hidden, uh, either behind the buildings in surface or in simple structures, uh, but the yellow lines are curb, uh, parking on the curves, uh, which is, helps enliven the neighborhood. This is one of the things we wanna do in this development, is to tie back, uh, you know, pedestrian environments back to the rest of the neighborhood. The, the, go to the next one here. Just the, the vehicle circulation, uh, this probably was, uh, worth about four meetings all by itself, how this worked. But the, the net result, I think, is that this development, if it will happen, this is a five to six-year development, of course, um, won't affect the neighborhood at all. We've got more than enough access, um, to Chodo and Jefferson, without screwing up the already kind of tight, uh, condition we have with Chodo and Jefferson. This is just a, a quick, uh, look at it, and one of the, if you, if you know that site at all, um, there's, there's a fairly steep slope from here down to Chodo, depending on where it is, anywhere from thirty to thirty-four feet drop in elevation. So, we've taken advantage of that to kind of tie the, the parking where we can, uh, and go with, uh, two- and three-story townhouses, uh, and then, as you get closer to Chodo, it gets higher. The, uh, whether this, the, the final plan looks exactly like that, the master plan's gonna look like that, but the actual height of every of the buildings and what the mix is, we want very much a, a pretty wide, uh, mix of housing, income levels, and, uh, and styles in the development. One more thing. Uh, just, this is a view, this is Jefferson and Chodo, sorry, fail, coming through here. Uh, the park, Lafayette Park is up here, Vindesec is right there. The redevelopment to Charlestown, right there. View from, uh, kind of over Vindesec is right here, so looking back, and you can kind of see here better than there, it's kind of stepping up the scale along here. The, the plan that's, is gonna be reviewed has a maximum of, of twelve stories when you get out to here. Kind of doubt we won't, we'll get to that level, but I didn't wanna, we didn't wanna have to go back to the neighborhood. It was, it was interesting, in the, in the meetings with the neighborhood, their very first comment was, you can make them bigger, make them taller, can you do that? Because they didn't now. But then, this they did now, yeah. No, well, the, the height of these is, if you, you know where eleven eleven is and the two warehouses, but the, the highest building is about the same height as that, the higher of the two buildings.
So, Bill, before you take questions, uh, if you could just rattle off, uh, said it's about a six-year development process. Six-year development process, total rollout is expected to be, how many units of square foot, and total development cost?
Total development cost depends on, on each of the buildings, of course, and each of its plots, but hundred fifty million something in that range. The total, uh, apartment count around six to seven hundred, depending on the, the final mix, from very small economic units to. Figure one.
Keep in mind, in the, the hope that we're making is simply to have a public hearing and presentation on the plan, but are there any questions for Bill to decide? Uh, let me, before you go, let's start with, uh, Mary on the phone, if they are, 'cause I can't see her hand.
No questions.
Okay. Alderman Boyd? Commissioner Boyd?
Yes. Bill, continue. So, how many owners are in that, uh, development?
You mean the landowners?
Yeah.
Only three of us.
Three guys. And are you guys individual owners, or you're in a partnership?
We've got a company that owns the whole thing, that we formed for this.
Okay. So, you guys are individual owners, but you came together as a development team for this?
Each of its owned a, a parcel, and we bought Prax Air, uh, and put it all together.
Okay. And so, the piece that you say, that, that shows under development, that's a different owner?
That's a different owner, who we're working with, so.
Okay. So, how well are you, I, I guess I'm a little confused, as it seem like you guys seem to be far along where you're going, and you have nice numbers that tell you what's proposed there, but there's nothing proposed in that box?
No, there is. Go, go back, if you would.
They planned, okay, I missed that. It says, "public park." Oh, that's just those two pieces right there?
This, this is the piece that we do not own, that we're working with. Actually, there's two owners, the owner of the, of the ruin right there, if we call it, um, and then the, this, this, in fact, we don't have it in the power connect.
Go to another park where it has like numbered one through twelve, or something like that. It's toward the end, like, right there. See, that talks about, uh, townhomes, residential, retail, hotel, da-da-da-da-da, but the other one says, "under development."
That, that's because, when this was done with the neighborhood, the neighborhood had just seen the proposed plan for that.
Oh.
And they, we had just started talking with them, and, uh, not in to get into detail, but, uh, what we proposed to them, is they were, they were worried about getting a neighborhood approval. I don't think they're gonna have any problem with getting neighborhood approval, but, uh, their land went like this, I'm getting into detail, and we, we proposed that they consider a land swap, but this owner, um, it would help their parking and, uh, give them a better frontage, actually.
So, when you guys go before the community, are you, you're gonna be proposing this particular plan? You're gonna, you already ha, oh?
We've been going through since September.
So, so it's evolved during the six months of?
So, where it says, "plan under development," what is that designated for? Is that retail, is that residential?
An apartment, three-story apartment.
Okay. And the, the community's all, all good with that right now? Okay, cool.
Yeah. It just, the only reason we have it on this plan is it's, uh, that we don't control it.
Got you.
But, you know, the, the two brothers are doing the development, and they're, I think it's gonna be a cool, good quality, so.
Cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Vine?
Just, uh, you may have covered this, but is this gonna be divided into phases?
Yes.
And what would be considered the phase one, two, and then whatever else?
If this is this, and with the neighborhood, it's just kind of an all or nothing thing here. So, if it's, if all of this is approved, as I said, the first phase, which we hope we start in June, would be this block, this block, and the demolition of the, the, uh, truck dealership here, uh, and then we're working on what the next phase is. This is the leading candidate, and this is the leading candidate.
And, so, you have in your timeline, and, and we will see this, and then we will compare it to, to the modified neighborhood plan, the Chapter ninety-nine. And so, your Chapter ninety-nine, will, will everything that we see on this rendering, including the area of the identified plan under development? Yes.
And to the device of, uh, the alderman, if you know, there's a gas station right here, actually, on our turny, too. And the regional plan, we had included that.
And the regional plan, we had included that. There's some significant issues with the owner of that gas station. There's drug dealing going on and stuff like that. For a lot of reasons, we decided we didn't want to fight one hundred and eighty attorneys that they have, so we left it out of the plan itself, unlike this one where we have a good relationship.
So with regard to the gas station, because I'm all too familiar with that, there's also a lot of commercial traffic that goes in another gas station if I'm correct.
Less so since the QuickTrip movement.
Right. That's a very good point. So are you doing any type of barrier along the side there for the development that you're doing to, I mean, noise pollution, light pollution, all of that becomes a factor when you're next door to one of those?
This is right here and this is the wall.
Is that just a retaining wall or is that?
Garage wall.
Okay. So that'll act as the buffer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're not concerned about that, yeah. The traffic, I don't think that's going to impact this so much.
As much as the illegal activity, basically.
In fact, it's increasing the pedestrian traffic and people there might actually help more eyes on the street.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Brown, did you have a...
I'm just curious, where's the trucking business going? Is that Hogan, that right Hogan Trucking or what is this trucking?
No, it's Vanguard Trucking. And they, they moved their, this is, this is actually a lesson for St. Louis. It was a big operation and they could not find a site in St. Louis. They wanted to stay in St. Louis. They moved over to two fifty-five, the bulk of it. But by contract with Trucking Industries, they have to have a service facility somewhere in St. Louis. So I'm not actually sure where it is. They just found this site and I haven't talked to them yet since then.
A little backstory is, on the corner itself, used to be an advertisement would be Mac Truck Repair. It was Jay Zone and before the QuickTrip came in, when we were doing the last amendment, they weren't participating in the amendment process because they wanted to have that Jay zoning as in their weather. And so part of the good, part of the good news here is this more comprehensive development with the ownership as you've now heard, so pretty good. Phil, will you say two more things? One, talk about the, to the degree that is leading edge aspects of this in terms of sustainability and modern thought in the architectural profession.
I should have put the slide in, sorry. Two other things about it, if you're familiar with the LEED rating system, so we're following that at bigger pace. Truth and lending, I helped write LEED, you know, about fifteen years ago. So we're following that and we're also following something that I'm less familiar with. It's called the well building system, a dedicated well. It has to do with healthy, healthy lifestyle. And there's two rival systems. We haven't figured out which one we're going to do because we're still trying to figure it out, but we're going to follow one of those. And then we hope this is going to work. One of the people we have on our, our team is doing a lot of urban farming on the rooftops, if you're familiar with some of that, and we hope to incorporate some of that into the project.
And the second question is, I'm not sure you explained what your day job is, given all this week, we have a time zone change because you were in Europe when you were in China. Remind everybody.
I'm in Argos, I could be there.
Very good. Thank you, Bill, for that presentation. Again, any action on the public hearing and recommendation?
That we approved the public notice for...
The move is seconded or approved on the, you can answer eight oh one. Any questions? Call for both.
Previous role?
There's been a call for previous role, any objections? There are none, it passes on previous role. Thank you, Bill. We'll see you in some months or so with this bulletin.
You're welcome.
And although we didn't really need to have that informational presentation, I thought I needed to have a little bit of dessert for you, given that you probably all have trouble finding your partners right now. So that's a pretty exciting development here. We thank you for being so considerate. You are such a good guy. Now, we're going, Roma's going to give us sixteen, eighteen, and seventeen, eighteen.
So this is the first of two Chapter ninety-nine planning studies and redevelopment plans. This first one, the site is about two, two-thirds acres in size. It consists of a, of a single parcel and it's located near the corner of, that's the northeast corner of Wisconsin Avenue and Etomac Street in the Marine Villa neighborhood. Just out of Cherokee Street between Jefferson Avenue and I-55. It's also located in the Benton Park National Historic District. The existing use on that site, oh, thank you, much better, is a vacant former school building. It was known as Shepherd School and there's some associated parking areas on that particular parcel. The building is in fair condition and the redevelopment plan is proposing a four-point three million dollar conversion, renovation and conversion of that school building. It's forty-seven apartments and eighty-five off-street parking spaces. The prospective developer is Sharif Mansoury. His affiliated company owns this parcel as well as three adjacent parcels as well. This is a aerial photo of the site and the assembly. The redevelopment area obviously is in red. The yellow lines just basically show parcel boundary lines. And the additional parcels that the developer owns are these two small parcels just north of the school property as well as this large parcel to the east. And nearby is Cherokee Antique Row, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, the charming New York district. The Lempe Rowery Complex, which is underutilized at the moment. And nearby also is the Off-Roundway Music Venue, which is a popular hangout. This is a front elevation of the Shepherd School. It was one of the buildings designed by William B. Itner, renowned architect. The building has about sixty-two thousand square feet of space and was closed in two thousand nine. The, in addition, on that same parcel, these are the two parking areas, north and south of the school building. And just to the north of the, of the parcel are these two vacant lots, which again are owned by the prospective developer, not included in the redevelopment area, but would be included as additional parking as, as part of this redevelopment project. And these are the north and south elevations of the side of the school building. And then here in the foreground is that large vacant lot that, parking lot there at that point, that is also owned by the prospective developer. There is no firm plans for its redevelopment and in the background you can see the rear of the school building. And then in terms of adjacent properties, you can see the streetscapes along the two adjacent streets, Wisconsin Avenue and President Street. You can see they're both pretty much residential blocks adjacent to the school building. And then further along, as I mentioned, is Cherokee Antique Row as well as the Lempe Rowery Complex. The city's strategic land use plan designates the entire redevelopment area as an institutional preservation and development area that's shown in the draft drew there. And typically you wouldn't have a residential use within an institutional category, but in this case it is allowed by virtue of the adjacency rule that's included in the strategic land use plan. And that basically states that if the proposed development project is allowed in any of the adjacent strategic land use categories, then it would be in conformity with the strategic land use plan. So in this case, the residential use that's being proposed and it's allowed in the surrounding neighborhood preservation area and by that adjacency rule, the plan is to find the redevelopment project to be in conformity with the strategic land use plan. There is no eminent domain being requested. The property, the owner owns the redevelopment area as well as the three adjacent parcels. There is a provision for ten years of tax abatement and as you may be aware, there's some intricacies now with how much tax abatement is being granted for various development projects. So in this case, the first five years, there would be a hundred percent tax abatement and the last five years being a seventy-five percent tax amount. So staff is recommending approval of the planning study and the redevelopment plan and Mr. Mansoury is here tonight and available for questions as well.
All right, just interrupted or interjected at this point. Mary may have just left us. We have a quorum without her and...
I'm still here.
So Mary, you're, thank you for making the arrangements to join us. I know you have another time commitment. We're fine on a quorum and we'll email you that PowerPoint of the development that's happening on Lafayette Square.
Great, thanks.
All right. With that, Mr. Mansoury, any conversation?
I know. It's, as you can see, it's a beautiful little building. Excited about redeveloping it. We've always been excited about it. Been working with them for about a year and a half now. Here to answer any questions that you can ask.
All right. With that, first, I guess I would ask this, what's your price point for...
Looking at about, talking about the...
I assume you have adult blood rating, but it's just... Any questions from Mary Watts, is on the phone?
I may have missed this, but what ward is this in?
It's on the ninth ward.
The ninth ward? And does anybody know, is he okay with eminent domain?
So there's no eminent domain currently included in the plan, but I did have a conversation with him before the meeting and he would like some time to regroup with the developer on this.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? I believe Commissioner Boy.
Yeah, so are these market rate homes or, yeah, market rate apartments and what's the stain of rent from what point to what?
So the smallest one would be about four hundred and seventy square feet. So on that is, I think, I think it's ninety-five square foot, you're talking about four hundred dollars or so ranging to about, I believe, nine hundred and some dollars on the larger one.
For a three bedroom.
So the one bedroom is about four hundred and seventy square feet?
Yeah, most of them are two bedrooms, so. I mean, yeah, they're just like about five floor five, three bedrooms and some one bedroom.
So I'm assuming the one bedroom is four hundred and seventy square feet?
Correct, that's, that's correct.
That thing's real tiny.
Sorry. That's just the one, there's only one. There are some one bedrooms that are like six hundred, six hundred.
Okay. And have you already gotten your construction team together?
Yes.
And what's your percentage of minority participation so far?
We are targeting the twenty-five five.
That's not why I asked. What is your current minority participation?
In terms of what work has been done, we're still doing contracts on some of the work.
So you haven't gotten all the subcontractors yet?
Correct. Some work is still out there. Some work is done. I, I myself am a minority contractor, so most of it is self-participation, but we have several contractors that have due that are coming to do it.
What kind of work does your company do?
We have some...
I mean, you do carpet, you say you count as a minority.
So what more of these general contractors, right?
But as far as the subcontracting, as a general contractor, you're not swinging hammers and nails, right?
Correct.
Okay, so on the construction side, what percentage? I know you say you're aiming, you have work started already, but you haven't negotiated with some of the other subs?
So it's still ongoing in terms of some of the contracts that are out there. So probably the, the time work is going to go to NMD and the roofing is going to go to NMD and several factors. Working with Vladimir on that, so been working with him on how it is on that, just currently going on.
So you've been working on it for about a year, you said, right?
About eight, four months of that having on for you.
And as far as your subcontract, how long have you been bidden out for the construction?
For the, working on that for the past seven months. He had the change with the, what was that, apartment, with the...
So you're saying that you're under construction right now and your goal is to meet twenty-five? And what are you at right now?
We are at that in the plan that was done, right, about twenty-five.
From the contract that you've already signed with Keygo, where are you?
I think I'm in the final one and you're in the final one with Vladimir, at least we have done the final one.
Okay. And what subgroup of minority do you follow in your company? Subgroup? Asian, African-American, Hispanic?
Asian.
Asian, okay. All right, thank you.
But I don't, this is, I don't want to complicate that with all the health reform.
No, I'm clear. No, I'm sure. I heard that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Any other questions from the board?
I do forget about, Shane, you mentioned that Alderman Gunther wanted some more time. On this, on this agenda item, it says it's supported by him. Has something changed since this was printed or...
So actually, there, this is a bit of an odd situation as well. The planning director also shared with me, we actually perfected a board bill and passed it out. I, as you probably know, chair of the Neighborhood Development Committee that deals with tax abatements for the city. This passed out, you know, a few weeks ago. It was perfected on Friday, but when it was perfected, it also said that it had already been approved by the Planning Commission and L-CRA, which it obviously is not, otherwise we wouldn't be talking about it tonight. And so Dan had expressed that, you know, there's still some, you know, issues related to minority participation that, you know, he wants to make sure are being addressed and would just like the opportunity to re-group with the developer to address some of those concerns again.
Okay. So that probably recommended, I guess, right?
Yeah, let me just say that we were given an email from the Alderman saying that he was in support of this development project. I was not aware of these reservations with him about it.
More current information. And no disrespect, the only questions can be opened are to the board to decide.
But we're available for questions afterwards.
Yes. So just as a reminder to the board on the action, and David will refresh me if I get this wrong, you can vote to approve the resolution, you can vote to deny the resolution, and probably you can vote to table the resolution or continue it.
With, with voting no versus tabling, what is the impact that that has?
If you, if you vote no and the board...
Because it still has to go back to the L-CRA, correct?
If, if it's going back to the L-CRA, that would mean that the L-CRA would be changing the plan, is that what the Alderman is intending to have happen?
I don't, is it, I mean, so we're also...
Call to me too, so.
Well, we're also on a timeframe at the Board of Aldermen. We're going down for legislative review in March, or next week, actually, I think it is.
And when's the sign and die?
So sign and die is April sixteenth, it's my birthday.
So there's, so there's a planning commission meeting on April seventh.
Right. I mean, if this ends up...
If the L-CRA is approved already, isn't changing, then there's no reason for it to go back to L-CRA.
So the Alderman told me that he was planning on putting this on the informal calendar tomorrow or soon on Thursday or Friday. So, you know, if we do that, then, you know, we would have to come back after sign die, which would be the seventeenth. The seventeenth, they would get reintroduced. But there's a planning commission on April seventh, that this could come back that for and we could take a vote at that point.
That, that would be fine procedurally.
Yeah. And the procedure to do that would be table?
At this time, yes.
Okay. I, I make a motion that we table this until we have further discussion with the Alderman. I make a motion that we table this until we have further discussion with the Alderman.
It's been moved to second and any discussion? Harry Nun?
Previous role.
We lost, we lost. Did she hang up? Are you still on?
I'm still on, but for only like five minutes longer. But I'm okay with it.
There hasn't been a call for previous role. Is there any objection? Harry Nun, this has been tabled for the next meeting, that's sixteen eighteen. Again, I'm sorry for the, cut you off, but you can have a conversation with anybody after the meeting. All right. With that, the next one we're going to look at is seventeen eighteen, and Roma's going to carry that one also.
Okay, so this is again, I'm sorry, the planning study redevelopment plan for the thirteen oh one, the boulevard redevelopment area. The site is a little more than two and a half acres in size. It consists of a single parcel, and it's located at the northwest corner of Union Boulevard and Page Boulevard. The family life neighborhood. The existing use is a vacant commercial building and a related parking lot. It was formerly occupied by Pete's Sure Save Market, which closed in December of two thousand and sixteen, and the building is in spare condition. The redevelopment plan is proposing the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new block, sort of, as well as an additional commercial use that would be built on that parcel at the corner of that particular intersection. The prospective developer is Hutton S.T. Seventeen LLC. This is a firm that's based in Chattanooga, Tennessee. The property is currently under contract by Save-A-Lot. It's currently owned by the owners of Pete's Sure Save Market. And once all of the approvals needed, the orders allow the development project to go forward, Save-A-Lot will acquire, sell it back, or sell it to the developer, Hutton S.T. Seventeen LLC, which would then lease it back to Save-A-Lot under a triple net lease. And representing Save-A-Lot here tonight is Jacob Sarat, here on the right, a real estate analyst for Save-A-Lot's corporate real estate department. So this is a, a little photograph of the site. Obviously, the redevelopment area is here in red. Located in an area with several institutional uses. Just off the map here is the Monsanto Family YMCA, Better Family Life, during this former school building. Annie Malone has a service center in this particular building, and there's a senior citizen complex there. At the corners, you have Marie Fowler Park, which is an icon in this particular neighborhood, and a Walgreens store, which was built fairly recently at the southwest corner. This is a photo of the, of the commercial building. It's about twenty-one thousand square feet in size, and again, it's currently vacant. These are some photos of the side of the building. Again, it was closed fairly recently, and when I was not taking photographs, it was being emptied out at that particular time. Just to the north of the site is the vacant lot. On the other side of Union are some attractive residential buildings. At the corners again, on the left is the Marie Fowler Park and Walgreens, which are some of the institutional buildings that you see along Page Boulevard, Better Family Life's facility, Annie Malone, and Pete's building, senior living. This is a site plan that was delivered by Save-A-Lot. And as you can see, the proposed store would be positioned to the north of the parcel. I should point out that north is in this direction, but we're changing orientation there, if you know. The building would be about seventeen thousand square feet in size, a little bit smaller than Pete's Sure Save, and it would include, just refer to my notes, I believe eighty parking spaces. The total development cost for the food store would be three point five million dollars. The parcel is relocated here, right at the corner of Union and Page. And the use has not been identified yet at this point, so it's unclear as to what use would be there. My understanding, talking to Mr. Sarat, that would be a decision that would be made by the developer based in Chattanooga, and not Save-A-Lot. And tendibly, the site plan shows a building of about twenty-seven hundred square feet in size with twenty-nine parking spaces. I think that was designed at the time, that they thought it might be some sort of a quick served restaurant, but that's, that's not clear that that would be particularly, it's undetermined as to what use would be there. The city strategic land use plan designate the site as a neighborhood commercial area in pink. Obviously, that designation encourages commercial development, which this would be, so it isn't conforming with the strategic land use plan. And there is no provision for eminent domain. Ten years of tax abatement is being proposed, and staff has written in the... I'd be happy to answer any question, Mr. Sarat, again, with Save-A-Lot, who is here. I talked with him briefly, and he mentioned that some of the mission members might be interested in knowing what, some of the selection criteria Save-A-Lot has with regards to selecting sites, considering possibility of whether more potential locations would be, would be open.
Any comments?
Hi, yes. Hello, David Strath, represents Save-A-Lot corporate team. Really tired of this project. It's a, I don't know if it's technically a food desert, but it's another served area in North City. Former grocery store is closed. We have decided our contract. Our stores are typically smaller, if you're all familiar, Save-A-Lot has been one or somewhere. It's an Aldi, we're looking for the hard discount model, so we don't need that much size of the grocery store. So ours are about fifteen thousand square feet. It's a large site, instead of having a sea of parking. Hutton Development, Chattanooga's our developer, they built for our country. We have a relationship with them. So, and this is, rather than having a sea of parking on the corner, on the hard corner right there, it's going to be a market-driven parcel. Just for the sake of the site plan, it's a restaurant. If there's no plan at the current time, it could be whatever the market dictates, you know, looking at that size, just the following ideas don't mean any of this, you know, the Sabia dialysis, you know, the ascendantal of the restaurants. I mean, it's a smaller parcel, it's got twenty-nine spaces on its own. In the meantime, it's just going to be grassed, and they can't imagine anything being built there until after our stores are built in. Obviously, we have an interest in making sure that another grocery store is built on the site, so we will be involved somewhat. Hutton will own that as well. We have it under contract. Once it's approved, we're going to transfer the contract to Hutton, which will own the property. Any questions?
All right. Mr. Brown first.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for contributing to the replacement of a grocery store in a much-needed neighborhood. Though, these sorts of sites are so uninspiring, which is fully, obviously, under your control, but, you know, we have another situation similar to this on Delmar and Hughes Highway, where we have a, we call it a parking lot with a grocery store, the Aldi. And one thing to keep in mind with this geography is that many people are carless. That is obviously a very thorough fair sort of place, but when you build a site like this, pedestrians are often challenged with their ability to get there safely. And, you know, I would ask that to keep in mind, and perhaps take that back.
I agree. I was going to ask exactly about that, where the interest is, but I bet you've touched that.
Maybe I've thought about that.
Where are the interests to the store?
The interests to the store, is this a sum? So it's going to be on the corner of our store. Keeping that in mind, so I don't know if you're familiar with Save-A-Lot's recent history, we're all much super valued, they sold us off. But we used to be a sister to shop at Save, now we're an independent. So we're looking at, you know, at the stores, hard discount, everyone shops at Aldi, we're looking for something popping up. Save-A-Lot's...
Your corporate home base is where now?
First city, so founded in Cahokee across the river, this is our home turf. I live actually within Frank Alderman's board, which is Metro, Delmar Metro station, so I guess Truism lending might as well, in my corner store. But keeping that in mind, you know, we know this area, not only these major thoroughfares, but, let me answer your question, I'll go back to what I said, that we're not changing the progress point except for the current one on Union, it's like right here, we're just shifting it over here. This one on Page is exactly where it is now, and the one on Minerva is exactly where it is now. But talking with Metro John Lenga, Fed Economics Development and Metro Planning, there's a bus line that runs along Page and one that runs along Union, part of their Metro Imagine Plan. Both of these are going to be increased service in the future. The bus stops are currently back here, over here, they're further back from the intersection. We've been in discussion with Metro, they've rolled out like a new bus shelter type initiative. Metro is not putting it out, but you have to pay for it. Green Streets is doing it, some of their industrial. So what Metro would like to see is bus stops relocated here to the corner, and here to the corner, or vice versa. And then keeping that aware, that they could walk on the sidewalk, and to the floor, it could be like a crosswalk or something, because we're very much aware of things you brought up. This is a walking area, people are taking the bus. So not only are they driving, how do people get to our store? Because ultimately, if they're able to get to the store easier, that's for each other to pick on, so.
And could you get from Minerva on that sidewalk to the door?
I believe so. I think they're just not connecting the parking lot, but we actually don't really want to put a sense on the property. If we're going to sit Walgreens, they have that raw fire, we don't want that. A decorative, a four point forty two would be all right, but we don't really want to make it any harder to get to our store.
Well, that's already more thought than any... So I do appreciate that.
You need some of that in my thought.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to.
Commissioner Boyd? I mean, the...
Call me whatever you want.
Ray?
I'm going to echo what Patrick said, and if I'm not mistaken, across this diagonal, it used to be that Globe Drug Building, right? Or was it a Globe Drug, or a drugstore building that was there at that corner? The big Austin building with the billboard on, anyway, that's gone.
And it's a parking lot now.
Yeah, and I just have seen that corner decimated over the years, and full disclosure, my grandparents used to own a store, Page and Newstead, the New Market back in the forties. But anyway, neither here nor there. But I see this parcel is having a real opportunity to be an urban development, and right now it looks very, you know, like a suburban model, typical suburban model. When you first introduced it and said that there's going to be the little commercial building right on the corner, I was excited that it would be right on the corner, but it looks like it's surrounded by parking spaces, and that anybody driving past, walking past, or taking transit, they see cars first and the building second. I get that the existing building that's on the site now is also set back from a different era, but I see a real opportunity, like how hard, and I'm just asking, how difficult would it be to reconfigure the plan so that the primary grocery store building is right up to the corner, with parking offset to the back, or to the side somewhere, where your primary visual is an edifice versus a parking lot?
I know you bring up a very good point. I know we've really touched that internally, full disclosure, I live in the city, I'm very much, you know, I'd love to follow the plan we had earlier, put a Metro link, you know, right here, right here, but we looked at that, we want to make sure to capitalize on this hard corner, and just...
But Hutton owns some property, not just, not Save-A-Lot, correct?
No, we brought them into the deal. So the only reason they're involved is because we don't, we're not a construction...
Right, but I say, who has control of the property?
They will have control over it, so like, they're actually the absentee representatives of them, Save-A-Lot.
Who actually applied to the L-C-R-A?
It would be seventeen of the, probably, who's been there.
I'm having somewhat of the same concerns as Commissioner Boyd, is that you get this big empty, Walgreens has it now, you get a big corner of parking, and a regress of the building, now you're going to have a regress of a Save-A-Lot and a big empty space.
Right. And the precedent opportunity, set a precedent at this, at these high-profile intersections, I mean, that's important to me, anyway. And it just doesn't, I don't, I fail to see how it'd be like a deal breaker to rearrange it so that it's a more aesthetically urban corner, but I don't know, maybe there's more to it than I know about.
Commissioner Brown, the visual of that, that King Toddley in Delmar, it was horrible. Commissioner Boyd?
Yes, thank you. Full disclosure, I live in Hampton Heights neighborhood. If I was Alderman, this wouldn't be happening, not like that. I certainly appreciate Save-A-Lot, hoping they'll come in Marlin King and Goodfellow, this will be the third one on Page, but then, so every four miles, maybe, you get to a Save-A-Lot, starting at Ferguson and Page, and Page Dale, then come there, and come there, but I love Save-A-Lot. But I would not support this design at all, because what it says is, I'm going to, you know, there's, it's, and I'll say it's a food desert, so there's a definite need, so it met all your marketing analysis, and you can make money. However, what it says, I'm going to take the least path, path of least resistance, I'm going to think about me, 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 I'm going to stick it in there, and everybody's going to be happy. So that's, that's my first thought, looking at this and listening to you. Now, being a resident of the Hampton Heights neighborhood, how many community meetings did you have about this?
We haven't taken it to the community. We met with Better Family Life, they were informed of it, they had a meeting with a number of higher-up people, this was discussed briefly, but it was also, they wanted to partner with us on a more macro level, and so...
Sure, sure.
We've met with Alderman Williamson, we've seen that. One, you know, it checks on a balance, where it's over the hump in terms of it's going to, you know, for sure happening, so here will be an award meeting, and that public representation, and all of that.
Right, so, so there will be a public meeting and award meeting, okay? I'm going to talk to my colleague, I'm not going to step on his toes, but I do care about development in the neighborhood I live in, although, and I represent probably eighty-five percent of the Hampton Heights neighborhood, he just happened to have that little small piece from where Better Family Life is, and Better Family Life do not get to represent that community over there. They're doing a lot of good work over there, but the people is what matters. And sometimes you need to have more meetings than just that particular award meeting where you may only get twenty people to show up, because as soon as things start rolling, people are going to say, I didn't know anything about it, and, you know, why would they build it this way? And then you're going to have, you know, a complaining and a whining, you know? So I would suggest that that neighborhood is canvassed for a community meeting, not just a ward meeting. And again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to my colleague, because I live in that neighborhood and he doesn't, you know, but there needs to be a real community meeting outside of the twenty-sixth ward meeting, because that's just going to be the people that live in the twenty-sixth ward, which only a handful live in the Hampton Heights neighborhood. So I would encourage having a larger meeting. I think that, matter of fact, I am sure that Save-A-Lot could do a better design than that. And when I think about suburban neighborhoods, and I think about development, I'm often reminded of the Walgreens at the corner of Clayton and Big Bend, and how that was a design. And it's a fancy-looking brick structure, but they put a lot of thought in, and why did they do that? They did that because the community would not accept a little plain vanilla Walgreens. But when it comes to neighborhoods like this, that are socially economically depressed and stressed, it's like, we get the simple stuff, you know, but the money is the same. And I just want to encourage Save-A-Lot to think outside their normal box, to build these boxes, if you will, no pun intended, but think outside of that space, and, and do something spectacular, because that is a lot of asphalt. And you can, I know you can do better, and I, I just can't imagine that building sitting back off Minerva and not sitting closer to Page, where when people are driving down Page, hey, there's a Save-A-Lot! I mean, it's a huge visibility, and to give visibility to this little bitty twenty-five-hundred square foot box, it's just, it's a disservice to the community aesthetically.
Yes, yeah, I mean, aesthetically, you're definitely right, you've got a major thoroughfare into Florence Park, for anybody coming north down Union, you've got major traffic east and west on Page. Visually, it's an opportunity for Save-A-Lot to make a statement, if they're really talking about investing in the city and urban community, this would be the place that you do it, and you put a marquee, you know, a marquee opportunity... And you put a marquee, you know, a marquee opportunity there. As opposed to, as you said, a box, a parking lot with a, with a box on it. And then next thing you know, you've got a Popeyes or a Chirp's Chicken sitting on the corner, which is really my concern, according to Patrick, you know? Or, I'm sorry, what do we call, what do you call it, a parking lot with a store? No, the food, a, a quick serve. Let's call it, yeah.
If I may to, I represent an area in southeast St. Louis City, the Dutch Town neighborhood. And we've actually been going through some similar, you can call them growing pains, if you will. You know, a few years back, Aldi's was looking to reconfigure their store on South Grand. You know, they actually had several contracts in place for property acquisition and whatnot. But there was a huge think from neighbors about them basically doing a parking lot with a store in the middle of it. And Aldi's frankly stepped back and, you know, contracts expired and, you know, they're still in their same store that's a little bit more pedestrian-friendly than the one, you know, that they were looking at doing. It's one of their most profitable stores in the entire region. They told us this here at the Planning Commission. You know, they're, you know, actually, they then ended up looking at moving, you know, across the street to a Desco property, an old Schnucks store in my ward. But then Aldi's built a store right across the street from Schnucks out in the county, and all of a sudden, there's a deed restriction on that property across the street from them. So, you know, that being said, Family Dollar then came in and bought part of the Desco site. And it's right on Grand, but they ended up building, you know, I mean, it's not an ideal situation, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the site at all. But they, they built a store facing northbound, but it's immediately, it's actually, there's a riser there, so it's not immediately street accessible anyway. But they wanted to be closer to Grand for the visibility. You know, they didn't want to set their store, you know, with a parking lot, you know, between them and Grand. So they're, they're actually facing towards Chippewa, but their store is actually immediately next to Grand. They've had tremendous success, and actually, if you go by there, the store is always busy, but there aren't a lot of cars in the parking lot, because the store that they built is right on one of the busiest bus lines in the entire St. Louis region. So a lot of the customer traffic that they get is actually from, you know, people who are walking or taking a bus to work, you know, and so, or home. And I would venture to guess that the clientele that you're talking about, you know, of the Page and Union is not all that dissimilar from the clientele down in southeast St. Louis City. You know, it actually, in many cases, will mirror it, and, you know, certainly from a income perspective and disposable income perspective, and the amount of money they spend on food, it probably all mirrors almost identically, I would imagine. And so I just, you know, for me, looking at this, you know, I would, I understand, you know, the corner situation, you all want to market the corner, you get more money off of the corner, you know, it's a win for you. But if you can't change the corner, I mean, you guys at least have the purview to change the store and to have the store actually at Union versus having, you know, a good fifty feet of space between Union and the store, I think would be, go a long way, you know, to inviting customers from the street into the store. And then also, you know, allowing for parking along the side of the building or what have you. I think particularly in these neighborhoods and in urban contexts, you're going to find that a lot of folks walk to these grocery stores. The Aldis even, you know, readily admitted during their presentation here, they were, you know, basically tripling the amount of parking space, but a lot of their customers came in from the Grand Seventy line, you know? And so one of the questions that this commission asked them was, you know, why are you tripling the amount of space in your parking lot when, you know, a good majority of your customers are coming in off the bus line? And, you know, their answer was basically, well, you know, every once in a while, the parking lot gets full. And it's like, so basically, we're creating a huge vacancy, you know? I mean, so those vacancies, you know, create a tremendous burden on our urban landscape as well, especially in major commercial corridors like this. Because that's fewer eyes and ears on the street, it's less traffic that would be visiting another business that could be adjacent to them. So, you know, if you all want to put the fine dining establishment on the corner, you know, and, and I, like, I get that, you know? I, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, property is fairly cheap. I just got an email this morning from Burger King, they want to buy, you know, a piece of property. And actually, there's a CVS pharmacy right on the corner at Gravelly and Chippewa, so they have a contract on the property that's adjacent to them on Chippewa. So the fast food establishments aren't necessarily needing to be at the corner, you know, they're still buying property that's immediately adjacent to those major intersections, too. So I, I just say all that because it's food for thought in terms of, you know, how you proceed moving forward.
Couple of observations. You made reference to trying to move, put a shopping, food store on a former Desco site, didn't work out well. Are you free to tell us how much you had to pay Peach Shore fine to acquire the property?
I'm not for sure if I am, and to be honest, I don't know if I know, I know what it begins with, I don't know if I, I don't want to say the wrong number.
One of the things that happened is they abandoned the market, and they were not the most friendly about putting a new use there that was also selling food. So it was a quite arduous process with Better Family Life, S O D C's Commercial Department and that type of thing, to get it free so there could be a provision of food to the neighborhood. I will remind everybody of this awkwardness, and that we're not voting on that diagram, is we're voting on the redevelopment plan that's attached to your, your resolution. And the urban design standards begin on page two, oh, shoot, on page two, there's a reference that reminds us that this is currently zone F, so they'll only be allowed to do on the site what F zoning allows them to do, which a drive-through is not gonna happen to F. But I will call your attention to pages four and five, which are the redevelopment plans, commentary about urban design and parking regulations. And those are what we're voting on.
So, I mean, you're all accurate, I mean, we were aware of this intersection. I know when they originally were plotting it out, they put the quick serve over here, they looked at the store over here, where, you know, they're not gonna pay as much, so to get the value down. From just like internal conversations and to give you guys a little bit of background, you know, real estate in general still hasn't changed from that nineteen-seventy shopping mall type mentality, so just in general, they're building massive parking lots and slowly kind of off Sabalot's record, but gotten them down. But it's still really hard to convince higher-up people in development, you can build this without having parking in front, you can build this with a lower ratio and be successful, especially in the Midwest where we have ours cars and, you know, if people walk in and the parking lot's too small and it's full, we have the mentality where, oh, it's busy. Well, it's really, they're just not as many parking spots. But you have to change people's perceptions. I mean, I agree, I live in the loop, this is not the highest and best use, but what we can financially put on this market means we couldn't do a mixed-use, high-def market
You know, and I understand that there's a lot of considerations. I would say not only is it not the highest and best use, I would say it's like among the, probably the lowest possible, you know, in terms of design aesthetics. And I get that we're not voting on the design, but, you know, it'd be one thing if you were gonna reoccupy the existing, the existing building, then, you know, that's fine, I've been there. But here, you're starting from scratch and there's a real opportunity to actually make a difference in the neighborhood that, you know, that needs something better there. And, and I'm afraid of the precedent that it sets for any of the adjacent parcels who might want to redevelop some of those vacant parcels right around there when they have this as a reference point. Doesn't, doesn't feel right to me, it feels like, it's like the, you see a path of, you know, the possibility to take.
I will, this store is going to be our tech store, it's gonna be our first ground-up of a new prototype. So as an initiative, I don't know if you've kind of been following Sabalot for the years. We haven't really built, opened up the store just nationally. In the past year, we've kind of been getting our cars, like regrouping, brought in marketing consultants, and we told them to just defer to me. I don't, well, I didn't know that sometime knew what this is gonna look like, but we've had some, they're essentially just in general, we wanna make it where people want to come to the store, not where people feel like they have to, or in the neighborhood, so that's the use of it. So the look and feel of it's gonna be different, you know? You can't just throw up a concrete block building anymore. But I will tell you that this store, you know, it will catch your eye, so it's not just going to look like.
To me, it's that parking all around, every edge, every visible edge of the street where people are walking on the busy sidewalks wherever, in urban context, and parking, parking, it looks like it, it, what you'd see in like a fair or something. And, I mean, there are even some suburban, there are even some suburban shopping centers that I've seen that do it really pretty well, considering the strip mall, like there's one in Rock Hill, go to the street and then the parking's inside. I don't see how you'd even have to limit urban use of parking, you know?
You just lift the store with the parking that's on the street.
Yeah, it's just like repositioning.
Okay. So on page four, the review of the plan, what we're voting on, which is, so on page four of the redevelopment plan, there are urban design regulations. Number two refers to the new construction, or all durations shall be positioned on the lot so that any existing recurring building masses and spaces along the street are continued as well as the pattern of setback. So that's when it comes to LCRA for review, that is their own standard that this was to be.
Thank you, that's a good point. So this is the senior facility right here, and then adjacent to the senior facility is another facility. And, and look where the setback is for that facility. And so this, I mean, a little one you would think would be up here. And I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but there has to be another way to do that. Even if you put this adjacent to that, like you see in some of malls where, like Schnucks for example, they have some outlets next door to them, that's just painful.
I will tell you, we, I can't remember what the legal language was, since it falls on two different streets, we put it on Union, so following that path of where the old store was, just because it's a rectangle and ours is more square, so we didn't really put it in the middle of the site per se, so we chose to move it on Union.
No, I'm not saying in the middle of it, but front would be Page instead of Union then. But the other thing is, and I don't want to shut up, but I, because I frequent Sabalot a lot, that on Ferguson, Page Dale, and then sometime on Grand, rarely ever have I gone to Page Dale and seen more than ten cars. It's always open space for parking over there. On Grand, it's never a third deal with parking, and it's just, maybe I need to let go of some of those guys that's been hanging on too long, because there has to be a paradigm shift in this stuff.
I will tell you, it's not a renovation, it's all new people, so it's lingering real estate, I mean, just macro level, and when it comes to...
Do they listen to the community, though? Will they listen to the community, where they just say, we're on a not build if we can't have our way? Because I look forward to having these community meetings.
I mean, the stronger the community, ultimately, the better the final product. When people raise their voice and, you know, make us aware, obviously, we want to be a successful store, so making us, making the higher-up people listen.
Okay.
So at this point, at this point, as I said, we were reminded that we are simply voting on the Chapter ninety-nine blinding, blinding that the LRA redevelopment, the redevelopment plan, and that LCRA will build this, this construction issue, we've heard basically the recommendation that they really go to the community and get some really good valuable input before proceeding with this.
So I'm gonna ask counsel for a question here. The redevelopment plan has some triages in it. One is it's offering a tax payment, two, it has a geographic area. It is also a process with LCRA, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Alderman. Not all changes to the redevelopment plan have to go to the Board of Alderman. If the Board of Alderman has already voted out the redevelopment plan, or to change it subsequently, is that your question? Yes, only major amendments need to go back to the Board of Alderman. So, say that in layman's land, I would... The boundaries. So, so if there was, after the, after the board bill is adopted, if there was a change to the boundaries, it would have to go back to the board plan, something consistent of nature. So we could recommend to the, to LCRA to make modifications to the urban design standards or, or to include some more community input in the process? Yes.
Could I say one thing, to echo what you were saying, as part of, you know, the developers' toolkit and meeting, have this conversation available, this is, I mean, this is, this is bound to change, so that's just all we got to say.
We've had the presentation, we've had plenty of very good dialogue on it, any call for action?
The other consideration I'd like to point out is, is this redevelopment plan is in the same situation procedurally as the prior redevelopment, in that it's already been approved or recommended for approval by the neighborhood development committee at the Board of Alderman.
That's why I'm recommending that we have the power to make amendments and changes, or suggest changes to the LCRA that don't have to be reflected in the attachment.
Just so I understand, but they wouldn't be compelled to consider those recommendations, right? They could just...
But they could consider.
But they could, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, right. So it would be a voice raising a flag, they're not compelled, but it would be a voice raising a flag.
So does that need to be part of our motion, or is it...
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if I want to make the motion, because part of me thinks that the new proposal is a bigger blight than what's there now, honestly. So I don't know if I want to be there. I know that's extreme, but I just, I seem to be...
What would the motion be again, I'm sorry? I'll just lay out two things. You're not specifically voting on this site layout. LCRA, they will ultimately be guided by the zoning, which is, for their permit, and LCRA's review of their design in light of LCRA's standards in the redevelopment plan. And so if you wanted to include in your motion something that was instructive back to LCRA about, you know, you can word it as strongly or loosely as you wanted, as to be considering more of the, I mean, there's actually a typo on here that's a little odd, but considering more of respecting the corner or things like that, you're welcome.
Is that the only chance that we would have, is to do a motion once we approve this?
Or you can instruct me to have a conversation or write a letter to LCRA, whether to... So any call for action? Let me check, counsel, I do anything I overstate?
No, I think you've actually done things like this before.
So if there is no call to action, call for action was our next option, or if that's been approved by the Blinding Commission?
You can, in redevelopment plans, it's a recommendation, you can recommend approval, you can recommend, but you deny it, or you can recommend a modification.
Approval, denial, modification. Okay, so we have those three options.
David, did I... The modification would be part of your recommendation.
Right, I'm sorry.
It's all a recommendation.
But is there a no action?
Your, your action, if you take one, would be a recommendation to the Board of Alderman. If you don't take an action, obviously, that in itself is a, not a recommendation, therefore. Inaction is also inaction.
So are there a motion on the table?
I'm just, I'll make a motion, but I'm trying to make sure that I make the right motion.
Which committee does go to, you know?
The Urban Development.
And we don't know anybody there.
Because I, I would like to see the project move forward, but it, it requires aesthetically a lot of, a lot of work. So we could make a motion to direct the LCRA... Um, so we could make a motion to direct the L C R A.
And what?
Which, which almost makes this pretty, uh, uh, more ceremonial. Um, but we could make a motion that L C R A work with the developer to, wait, what?
You're approving this boiler flight of a redevelopment plan that has the option of being tweaked and different for every redevelopment plan that's out there, except for the categories. Because the category is called urban design and parking regulations. You can make a motion to them about, uh, how they might consider changing that based on neighborhood input or something like that.
I, I'm gonna just work with my colleague on this particular issue, and I'll just make a motion that we approve the redevelopment plan for, that's before us.
Okay, it's moved as the approval of the redevelopment plan as it stands.
Do we want to, uh, like, an approval with a recommendation for modification?
Yes, I would like to do that.
So, because I think we'll probably have more support from the commissioners if we do something like that. Do we wanna be specific about the modifications, or do we wanna just say modifications?
With modifications to create a more urban.
And pedestrian accessible.
That's right.
Okay, you wanna make that?
Removing the building.
I withdraw my motion, I withdraw my motion, I didn't get a second, so I withdraw my motion.
So motion that was.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the redevelopment plan with the recommendation for a modification that the developer, uh, makes.
At L C R A?
At L C R A, uh, makes a recommendation or, uh, considerations, considerations to the developer to make sure that the plan, uh, for this is more urban in context and more pedestrian friendly.
I'm, I'm, with your permission and David helping me.
Modify away.
Is, is, as you said, your recommendation, you have, you're approving, you're making a recommendation to the L C R A. And that is constituting what you said.
A modification to the plan to.
Right, and, and so I think, uh, you're talking about that plan.
Which is not really.
To the parking reg.
You're, you're saying a modification to site requirements.
Site requirements, okay.
That's correct.
So urban design regulations?
Yeah.
Just a plan.
Site, just gonna get to section eight B.
The redevelopment area.
So they want to get official, uh, I'd like David to drink after the meeting, but, that's what I'm gonna write before he starts. Well, we have to read, yes, we actually read the, what, what is the?
Well, what, what I'm, what I'm hearing is a motion that will request that L C R A consider modifications to the redevelopment plan to create a more urban and pedestrian accessible, uh, design and.
That's the.
Uh, right, and then, and then your standard and approve the, or recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen of the plan.
So are we clear on that motion?
Uh, do you want to have the request or recommend?
Request.
You're recommending to the Board of Aldermen?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Did I say request?
You, you, you just, I just wanna verify that one, that's why you did that.
My motion, Patrick seconded.
So we have a motion and we have a second, that we approve the plan and that there be recommendations to L R A, L C R A to make modifications to the site development plan. And, so, call for, roll call vote please?
Alderman Boyce.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Alderman Coen.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Andrew Strather.
Aye.
And Mr. Jones, all present voting yes.
So with that, as I, we just, we, we recommend, and we do appreciate that there is a project being done on this corner, and we thank Save-A-Lot to be the one stepped up on it. We just simply want them to be a more active, community, visible partner, make it a better, a more beautiful location than what looks like on a draft plan. With, with that, uh, thank you, and now Don has two bits of new, one bit of new business.
Number one, because we did the presentation for Mr. Odell and next of it.
And.
And the other one is, takes no words. All have a handout of some pictures of buildings?
But Don, they're not in color and there's no map.
Of course. Not in color and there's no map.
There's no map.
And, and how could they be something that Roman or I produced? Uh, the, the headline is court. These are all reviews that the Planning Commission did of Preservation Board decisions that were the applicant, including particularly Jerk, the first one.
What's the jerk?
Uh.
Was that the jerk?
Yes. Yeah. Anyway, these are, these were all upheld by the court. Meaning our denial, uh, uh, the denial from the city body at the Preservation Board, at the Planning Commission, went to court, they were all adjudicated, and the judge ruled in our favor, meaning continued the denial for demolition of everyone.
That's great.
Wonderful.
Do we have the procedures in place to push them to continue the building?
Uh, we had that conversation with staff today, we're cranking that up. There would be help if there were a higher, uh, historic buildings that have a high merit, it was a different standard. But we're gonna work with the Building Division to say, "I don't wanna see that jerk from the first one."
And to stop demolition by neglect.
Yeah, so demolition by neglect is, is a legal term, but we have some gradational powers on it.
With that, the, in theory, our next meeting will be held on April fourth, uh, and we will get words of that. That's the first meeting of the month. Any other new business from the Commission?
Second.
It's been moved to second of most in the meeting.